I'm going to call the meeting to order at six thirty. Remind everyone this meeting is being recorded. David, would you read the virtual meeting information?
Certainly. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty orders in certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbard's Soul Board will be conducted via participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public indoor parties with a right indoor requirement. This meeting can be found at the town website. The select board and town administrator will meet in person as per the Hubbard's and Board of Health Direction given their tw- twenty-third approach meeting of twenty twenty month. Now, in attendance of the members of the public will be committed, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom. And if we are unable to do so, best efforts we will post on the town's website, a comprehensive record of the proceedings after the meeting.
Thank you. The whole session is anyone here or in the chat room or open session? Aaron, do we have anyone? Do you know?
We do not have anyone at this time.
All right. Thank you. Item two. Meeting minutes approval twenty sixteen, twenty twenty-one. In this case, the board be asked to make a motion to approve the minutes pretended in general consent. I believe the three of us, we were all there. Minor.
Because he is an old one. You got one. Oh, what good question. You got a new board agenda.
Sure.
But that. Second two is not.
Yeah.
An item.
Oh, okay, so we'll pass on that. Katie? Yep. Yep, so I covered the. You covered some beautiful, went well on May first. Laura Foley and the crew down there got a lot of trash, filled that dumpster. So, good job everyone picking up trash around town. Coming up, we have hike on Fieldstone Farm down on Lombard Road on twenty-second at one P M. With a rain date of the twenty-third, and that's where you can ask any questions to the Open Space Committee and take a nice little walk for the land that is part of an article for CPA funds. And then we have, of course, the Hubbardson Fair coming up on twelve from nine to two. We have lots of fun things for everyone, food trucks, little entertaining for kids. Lots of artisans and crafters, local businesses will be set up. It's going to be a fun day. Bring your camp chairs picnic blankets and have enjoying, relaxable time out at the rec fields with us. And then, of course, we have the day on August twenty-eighth at ten AM. So everyone start thinking about boats you're going to start building, either just come down and enjoy a fun day of people floating around in Brigham Pond in a cardboard boat and see how many they. And then, last but not least, we have Field Day September eighteenth with a rain date the nineteenth from nine to three. Again, that's going to be a nice, hopefully beautiful day out at the rec field with the lions. And again, food trucks and lot vendors and things to do and games to listen to. So again, a nice fun day out at the rec field, which I think we all could definitely enjoy. So that's what's going on and coming up.
Next. Assuming all those that you just mentioned on the town site. So. Calendar.
Yes, hopefully. Fingers crossed.
Thank you very much. Item four, business. Discussion of the annual town meeting, date, location, and time. I was reading earlier this afternoon with David and the discussion we had had to do with the time talking to the board here. Initially is written down at six thirty. I mentioned in the past that it was seven o'clock because it was easier for people just getting home from work. It's a get here. So what feeling of the board, six thirty to seven o'clock?
I'm fine either way, but if more people can get there.
Later time.
If it was, yeah, if it's more conducive for people that.
My Chris.
I think whatever time gets the most community involvement is what we should use.
Well, that's how I was leaning this step and when I mentioned seven, because I said people can go from work. Yeah, it would give them a little bit more time to. Okay, so let's insert seven and get a motion from the board.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we have our annual town meeting at June first, twenty twenty-one at the Hubbardson Center School Gymnasium beginning at seven P M.
I was second.
We have a motion made. Is there any discussion, any questions? Well, all right, then I will call the rule call. Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And myself. Item twenty-five, report of the Finance Committee to hear three forward of the committee on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant articles to let the board. If everything except one particular article for three hundred fifty dollars, which is in the revolving fund for parking. David recommends that we drop it totally from the warrant and that would require a motion to do so.
Okay, so we need a motion to drop that.
What's?
If the article is.
The article is what, three hundred fifty dollars?
From the revolving fund for parking.
Parks, so the person who asked for this article feels that we should be segregating within revolving fund monies from keep Hubbardston beautiful versus other recreational activities sort of funded through the. According to municipal financial law, there's no way for us to make that segregation. And so this article is not ready for prime time. You can pick it up at the meeting after we do our research. It's received a negative recommendation from the Finance Committee based upon their meeting of Friday night.
So we need a motion to drop on it was article twenty-three, article twenty-three, yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to drop article three for three hundred fifty dollars from revolving fund from parks.
I'll second.
Motion made in second and discussion, questions? All in favor?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next item. The legal counsel here, the report of the legal counsel, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant articles. David was saying only changes were format, not substance. So that's anything else you want to add to that, David?
Yeah, I received the legal counsel's comments on the warrant this morning, incorporated them into the draft that you have before you. The change for minor rewording of three of the C K articles, but changes to the substance of those articles with the purpose to.
Students, any discussion?
No.
No action needed there. Item twenty-seven, report on boards committees offices. I don't think we have any to be offered tonight. Am I correct on that?
I have heard that in some.
Katie?
I'm not quite sure. I've heard from signing board and they're happy with the two articles.
Okay. I'll apply that. Item twenty-eight. Police reform bill, this came out in December for an area member. And do you mind explaining?
No, I don't. Police reform bill came out in December and it has enhanced training requirements, particularly for part-time officers. The chief came to me, asked the chief to review the police reform bill to see if there's been financial impact to the town. He came back and said, well, there's about twenty thousand dollar act for the additional training to do. And I took that number, we worked it and by staggering this over a couple of fiscal years, we've knocked that number down to four thousand dollars. We can operate the four thousand dollars into the police operating budgets coming fiscal year. Still maintain a balance, positive balance in the general fund. So, last time you met, you performed a vote to approve the budget. I asked you to re- revoke that with a four thousand dollar increase to the police line.
Basically, you'd be asking an amendment to it, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Finance committee reviewed this on Friday night and they approved it.
And where's the money coming from?
It would be coming from reason appropriate. There's enough pushing.
Okay.
All right, session. Okay, so we'll, Chair will accept a motion.
Yep, I made a motion to reopen, amend, and close the budget, adding the increase expended for four thousand dollars to the plea as discussed.
One second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Item twenty-nine, the petition ballots. Discussing with David, he was telling me the deadline has been reached and we haven't heard any going around town unless you folks have. So we'll take a motion to close petition.
Yeah, make a motion that the select board moves to accept, add and close petition ballots to the annual town meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Okay, this has to do, next one, I didn't discuss in the annual town meeting, so like recommendations. And we can break this down, each copy of the articles, et cetera. Select would recommend articles one through twenty-five, following exceptions, that's if there are eight, as we are discussing. David was telling me articles one through seven, we can move by a consent and the motion just to go right through them. So that would just be to take care of the motion right now without having to go through those.
Yeah, so it does all general housekeeping ones, right?
Right.
So I'll make a motion to, are we accepting or? It's a wording.
Recommend.
Recommend. So I'd like to make a motion to recommend articles one through seven on the town war. As written, motion made.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Are there any discussions? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Passed. Next group of the articles, eight, nine, ten, eleven, had to do with budgets. So should we review them individually to before we move to accept them?
Yes. You've already taken a vote to approve the budget. The budget is expressed in four articles. First one is the general fund for non-school related costs.
That's the lake you're talking about.
Article includes the four thousand dollar increase to the three ninety-nine in budget. Total of a million, fifty-seven thousand and one hundred and six dollars. It's a budget that's within your, within your means. And it reflects the numbers that we've been working with since Ryan presented his budget back in March fifteenth. Article nine is what chooses regional vocational technical school district assessment. This is based upon a quote that we received from them. So that's the actual number. Article ten is the actual assessment from the problem regional school district. On information that they shared with the Finance Committee on Tuesday last. Article eleven is twenty-nine thousand, ninety-three dollars to pay for our share of the school debt for F twenty-two. So those four articles are the budget.
Some more questions on the board on any of those articles?
Article ten. Is there, is that this number? Is that, is there any fluctuality in that? Because I remember our chair, the school, we had a big to do with the school budget. They, they came back with a number that we couldn't, we thought was too high and we challenged them with that number. And we went back and forth with percentage of the payout. So is this, is this number subject to change or is it number?
Once you voted, it's not subject to change. It's the number that I received from the district. And it's about a thousand dollars less than the number that Ryan presented to you on March fifteenth.
And I believe at that time, because I'm mentioning it maybe at the last meeting to, to your point is that before this number, we had already expected to that percentage beyond which we absolutely would not move. We wouldn't accept anything. And so that already presented to them. So this is a reflection of that. I believe that was the case. So David, eight, nine, ten, eleven, should we make a motion to accept them as?
Yes.
As a unit as.
I recommend, okay. I'll make a motion that we recommend articles eight, eleven for the town war.
Awesome. Second.
Which we made in second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Passed. I think, David, you wanted to talk anything about the CPA articles you mentioned to me?
We're going to go over to article sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are C K articles. The first one is for the annual debt service for the Hubbard's and Public Library roof. Seventeen is seventy-five thousand dollars for the Fieldstone Farm Land Preservation.
A C P A. Sorry, not interrupting.
Quite. Right. In this twenty thousand dollars for the cost of the materials to build a family house on rugged, the assistance of Habitat for Humanity. Seventeen is the Fieldstone Farm for the total of seven thousand. Eighteen is the mandated appropriation of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for administrative expenses for the CPA committee and then the allocation of the monies into the various buckets that are required by law, historic resources, community housing, space preservation and are to go into undesigned reserve. Article eighteen is twenty-eight thousand dollars for the rehabilitation of the library. And article twenty is twenty thousand for the exterior of that library.
David also mentioned this this afternoon, article seventeen, possibly the videos in the town meeting.
Yeah.
As for discussion, to be discussed, I'm sure.
Yeah. States, because they were trying to explain it to me on the phone and I'm like, you need to bring a whiteboard because.
So articles fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, the CPA articles. A motion to accept that.
I will make a motion to recommend articles fifteen through twenty, the CPA articles for the town war.
I'll second it.
A motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Article thirteen for eight items, David told me, it's from the Capital Improvement Committee.
We're hopping all over the place.
Article thirteen, okay.
Bottom of page three.
We didn't do twelve either, yeah. Or, or thirteen, or fourteen.
We'll get, we'll get.
Okay. Go in order, people.
You're doing the clumps, doing the clumps.
Okay, so what are we on thirteen?
All right, thirteen, you have the capital plan as presented to you on March fifteenth on Ryan.
Yep.
Just been approved on the Capital Improve Committee and the Finance Committee. It's a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for eight capital purchases. A hundred and eighty-two thousand of that can come from free cash and then eleven thousand from the Holden Hospital account.
You see, you have that already changed. Yeah, those are the actual, I don't. Any questions, discussions, first?
Yeah. Looks like some you've talked about and are aware.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to accept, excuse me, to recommend article thirteen for the annual town war.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes, motion's passed. We move to article fourteen, which is the city of Garnet, request for two trucks for animal control.
Going to the interim municipal agreement we have for with the city partner for animal control. We are, we are obliged to pay for the, our portion of the cost of two used trucks that they acquired for animal control purposes are cut of the, of the cost is about eleven percent based upon population. I have reached out to guard and said, you know, can you give us a five-year capital plan? Because this was a surprise.
Yeah, great. I appreciate that. This kind of.
Yeah.
Came out of a little.
All right, I, do you want to discuss it all? Sorry, I'm not taking your job, Jeff.
No. No, any questions or discussion, motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to recommend article for the annual.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Another thing that David mentioned, for articles twenty-three and twenty-four, they're planning, they're the planning board articles. And he felt that this has to be taken by us with those, that particular, those articles.
So twenty-three and twenty-four. So we're, we still have twelve, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Twenty-four, twenty-four was gone.
Twenty-four, they're planning once. So there's no action need to be taken by us.
Oh, wait a minute.
I don't have articles.
No, no, no. Yeah, that's not.
So article twenty-three at the top of page seven, new twenty-three is the greatest development.
Okay, so we don't have the twenty-four then.
Right.
Close twenty-three and twenty-five.
I'll make that change in the final draft.
Okay, so it will be twenty-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-four is a.
Yes.
First century stuff.
Well, it was supposed to be. It didn't make that. It was supposed to go last year into June, but they want to seem like anyone was trying to pull a fast one, seeing with COVID and all the weird that was going on. So they wanted it to go to a home. It was supposed to go to the special town meeting and they didn't have a court for their open public. So therefore, and there wasn't enough time to reschedule it before it. So therefore, they couldn't put it on the war. So now it's here. All right.
Remaining articles are twenty-one and twenty-two.
And twelve. I'm keeping track. Yeah, I know. I'm writing it down.
All right, so what are we doing now, the twelfth or twenty-one and twenty-two?
Let's go with twelve. Let's keep it. Sorry.
Twenty thousand dollars from the cable advisory, private cable advisory committee. This money comes out of the Texas cable related fund. The cable company gives the town money that goes into revolving. It's used to base the programs. There's no impact on taxes for this.
So recommendation to, that we recommend.
Make a motion.
On the motion that we recommend, let's rephrase that, article twelve on the annual town war.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Articles twenty-one and twenty-two.
Article twenty-one is associated with the sixty-eight of rehabilitation project. And raises fifteen thousand dollars to fund any cost of land, eastern acquisitions, appraisal surveys and other, other expenditures. And this authorizes the town to take the actions necessary in order to develop project with the assistance of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Any questions? Article one-one, one twenty-two.
Twenty-two is recommended by in some presentation that we take fifteen thousand from free cash and put that into stabilization. His goal was to have a hundred thousand dollars of free cash available after committing the amounts that we're reducing. We've got it around ninety-two thousand, so that's enough.
Further discussion and we take a motion for both the twenty-one and twenty-two? I'll make a motion to that we recommend articles four and twenty-two for the annual.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, discussion. All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. That takes care of the warrant, I think, David.
Both who sign and post.
Okay. So make a motion that we do sign the.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we sign and post the twenty-twenty-one annual town meeting war.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes. And I think we look for the process to sign it, correct? Yeah, yeah. So that is done. Okay, I moved to item thirty-two, I guess we are, yeah. Any discussion of the annual town election warrant? Doesn't have any discussion or could we have a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion that the select board moves to approve the twenty-twenty-one annual town election warrant to take place on the eighth of June, twenty twenty-one at the Hubbardson Center School Gymnasium from seven A M to H P M.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Katie?
I.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Motion passed. And thirty-three. David, would you give us the update on the school situation, school roof?
Last Thursday, we opened up its school roof project. There were four bids received in apparent low bidder and doing our due diligence, pick all the numbers and so forth. Those capway roofing systems for a base bid of two million, forty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The alternate is a subtraction of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred for a base bid. Less of the alternative is one million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, eight fifty. The architect is recommending that we do not accept the all that one because that would reduce the, the project. The base bid is within budget. So that's the information that will be brought to your attention. Next Monday, there'll be a, Dan is called for a select board meeting. We'll have the contract documents ready for you and the, the information that made in order to avoid.
No doing it here again?
Yeah, we're going to do it.
So there's no action we need to take time, correct?
No.
All right.
Good, you've got a project.
Chris? Any questions on that? Next Monday, all right? The update on the Country Hand Scholarship?
Have any applications been handed in?
Yes, some.
Oh, you actually got two? Nice.
And, uh, motion to close the, the applications, because the period is now reached, where it should be closed.
All right, I will make a motion that the select board, um, closes the acceptance of applications to twenty-one Country Hand Scholarship.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor, Katie?
Aye.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff, yes. Um. Business. Uh, David, would you update us on the Communications Tower?
Certainly, um, I received. Asked to more Y R T for an update, I received this reply today. Um, the geotechnical survey, it's been reviewed and appears that there's no major excavating or blasting that will have. They discovered such approximately fifteen to twenty feet below the surface that they can use to attach the concrete pad as an anchor. Project manager is working on draft plans and specs for two R F Ps, the first R F is for the actual construction. And then the other one is for the radio communications equipment to be attached to that tower. This is supposed to be happening in the next two weeks. And this is going to go to the state nine eleven department for their commentary. Once we receive that, then the project will move forward.
So we still have to wait for, go to the state people, we're missing anybody in that area. Because a lot of people are asking when something happened.
Trust me, I get bombarded all the time about it. I'm first one going, I just bought the cell tower.
Because when I first saw that email, that's when I, and I was talking to you, we get an update? Because I had a lot of people saying, when are we gonna see some people there?
Yeah, because remember, we were promised what? I, I kind of tried to nail down a date that it'd be in by March.
This, this has been going on and then I.
Oh, it's been going for years, yeah.
Since we've been on the board.
Yeah. Ridiculous, like, just how long it take to build a tower?
Okay, uh, any further business? David, you have anything?
All those. Couple things.
The update on our reopening plan?
Reopening plan, we're trying the first step tonight with the effort of having the select board here in person and the. Community participating in Zoom. Uh, so we'll obviously ran into some audio technical issues and we'll work to address that so that we have a more. Full experience next time. Uh, Town Administrator Report, we have a number of things that have happened, starting May tenth today. Commonwealth, uh, reopened certain outdoor phase for industries such as amusement parks, theme parks, outdoor water parks. Uh, they're permitted to operate at a fifty percent capacity. Uh, road races, other large outdoor organized amateur professional group athletic events are. Permitted to take place, staggered starts and other safety measures. Um, large capacity venues such as indoor, outdoor stadiums, arenas and ballparks. And at a twelve percent capacity, you can increase it to twenty-five percent. Youth and adult minister sport tournaments. Allowed for moderate to higher risk sports. Same will also be permitted indoors with strict distance requirements at performance and these restaurants, event venues and other businesses. Grocery stores and retail stores no longer are obliged to have dedicated hours for seniors, but they are encouraged to continue that practice. In addition, we received today information from the U S Treasury about the ARPA. Funds, the American Rescue Plan Act money and. President is in line to receive a thousand, a million, four hundred thousand dollars. So this is, uh, this is information that we've been waiting for very patiently, just came out this afternoon, so we'll be going through that. Brian suggested that, um.
This is the expenses from coal, correct?
Right, yeah, right. So it's for economic development, economic recovery, lost revenue, um, staffing issues. Uh, infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband. Um, these are all uses, we don't know how, because I haven't read the. The guidelines yet, but, uh, we'll put it on a future agenda. Brian has, uh, provided us with very thoughtful and detailed, uh, thoughts about how even to spend the money. So we can talk about that as our next meeting. Um. Annual town meeting update, we've done a lot of work tonight on that. In addition, the Senate Ways and Means Committee is going to release their budget tomorrow. Hopefully that will not change our state aid, uh, assessment of contribution. Um, we are asked if we wanted to get a earmarked into the ways and means budget that we provide. Our Senator had information by Friday the fourteenth. So, uh, Brian had in mind the roof for the salt shed that was damaged.
Okay.
About five thousand dollars, but wanted to give you the opportunity to come up with, uh, other things to be asking for.
Can we ask? We, can we ask for all, just all of it?
You can ask. My experience is that, um, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars is, is doable and it's kind of.
A one-shot per town, or do they can get more than one thing?
You can get basically one thing.
One thing, okay.
So Senator Gobie needs that by Friday, correct?
Right.
So that's what you're gonna submit in?
Yes.
And yeah, if that's, if you don't get one thing, then let's put our eggs in a basket.
Yep.
With what we need most.
All right, and we talked about the center school roof, um, the, and Stan, we got the funding through the Finance Committee, so. We're ready to go on that. Uh, green communities, um, upgrades is substantially complete. The I T grade is substantially complete with the laser fish scan system. Uh, they're inputting sixty thousand documents into the, uh, into our archives right now. And then once that's done, we'll start doing our own scanning. Our foundation update, we have funding in place for the, uh, decommissioning of the well and that project is moving forward. And recreational field replacements, the bids have been obtained. Uh, there were five bidders, the low bidder is apparently Gerard's company, at eleven thousand, two hundred dollars is. This is being evaluated by the Park Commission and should be a very soon.
And that's for what, David?
That's for the fencing around the.
Playground.
Playground, I mean. All right, so through procurement, um. Our revenue expenditures were good through March, I'm waiting for the April numbers, which I should get later this week. And the Treasurer and I are working on resolving tax title issues. And we have. The following events coming up, the deadline for posting the warrant is May seventeenth. June first, we have the annual town meeting. And June eighth, we have the annual town elections and encourage voters to participate in the elections and meetings.
I have a question for you, not in the G A C, your T A report to the, um. Previous, is the opening plan? This may be redundant in terms of what I'm asking, but I'm staring up there, I'm thinking, if we are back in here, um. Is it redundant, or let me ask the question, when will we begin again revising on cable? So that people can watch it? Or is that being redundant since Zoom?
Apparently the Zoom and the cable company don't work well together, so we didn't try that, I know you mentioned that as.
The other option is, I don't know how it would work. Um.
I don't.
But they can, in Templeton, they did it through YouTube Live. Which we already had, that's where those videos go, is YouTube. The Brittany and them, they all put them on our YouTube channel, but in Templeton, they did it live. And I don't know how that would work, if they could even do that, uh, through this, what the system that they have rigged up. Then people could comment on the YouTube channel itself.
Oh, I see.
So you could watch it either at home, in your home, live.
They must have.
Or you could watch it on the YouTube channel, live.
They must have had to contact the cable, or work out something like that.
I have no idea.
Doesn't interfere.
I have no idea how they did, but that's how I, uh, because I saw some of the ladies in the other offices. And they lived in Templeton and they said, yeah, that's how it just works, so. I don't, I don't know. But yeah, I'm, I think, you know, I'm personally, I think we should go back to the regular and. I don't, because this whole, if we can't get this to work, this is, because like now, I don't even think I'm in the damn screen. And we got like four chairs over there, oh wait, my hand is, there we go. You know what I mean?
It's so long.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's hard, it's difficult, Zoom is very difficult. And with the lack of internet here, so whereas none of us can bring, you have to print out, the whole point of getting the Chromebooks and all that stuff was to not sit here and waste all this paper. And to not reinvent the wheel and make, you know, Aaron and you spend all this time making all these copies, because it's kind of not efficient for what you guys need to spend your day on. So, but with the lack of, we can't run the Zoom.
Right.
And do that, so now we're back to, what, about five years ago, when we used to sit here with paper and do it all? Yeah. Oh, I don't know. I did, yeah.
If we had a stronger internet, I would recommend that we look at something called Board Docs, which is a complete online agenda with, uh, all the documentation accessible to the members as well as the public. Uh, and that can happen in a year. But we just don't have.
Yeah, internet sucks.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
So it's something we should be looking into soon anyway, as far as.
Well.
When we actually get back.
When, when are we having people back?
That's, um, Ryan's original plan of reopening, is that if I recall correct, is he was following state guidelines.
Yeah.
And until the state says it's okay to have this kind of grouping and, I mean, we're limited because we don't have a big building. So.
Yeah.
The number of people that we could have in here, you know, based on, what's it, twenty-five percent now, I think that they're allowing? But that was Ryan's indication that this would not happen until the state says it's okay for us to be doing this.
Well, because you can have indoors, what, two hundred, no, a hundred, right now?
It's based on the.
Well, yeah, but you can open up the next room, we don't usually.
I believe the percentage is twenty-five percent now, I think.
I'm just saying, we don't usually. I mean, if we have a public meeting, then that's a whole, and I understand, don't get me wrong, we have a public meeting. But are the normal meetings, how many people are actually sitting in here?
Well, to your point, but also from the point of view of people, it is a small enclosed place. People may not be comfortable for every reason. Because then they got to social distance.
But now you have. But if they didn't come before, they could already submit a question via email and, you know, beforehand as well, you know?
Oh, I mean, I think, yeah, a hybrid model.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just, it's our first go of it.
And it's working, so that's a plus.
It's partially working. Yeah, we get more experience with this Zoom, you know, maybe we can. Have the microphone work and have people in the audience. The plan was to have a hybrid where we would be here, no public would be here, questions and answers could come in like we do when we were completely remote. So, I mean, I swear. This is our first experience with that model, so let's try to fine tune the technology. See if we can make that work like it's supposed to work.
Agreed. Okay, uh, item seven, policies to review, I don't think we have any.
Uh, I'm, I didn't work on that this.
Okay.
It's all time eating all the time.
Item eight, full committee updates.
Yeah, no, nothing really.
Okay, um, Aaron, is, do you have anyone wishing to, uh, take part, have questions?
I do not have anyone now.
Okay, so that is not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I don't have any.
What happened, I have one question while I'm, uh, thinking about it, what happened at, um, two forty-eight Gardner Road?
Two forty-eight Gardner Road, I received a telephone call from the property owner who pledged to, uh, clean up the property.
One of that.
This was about three weeks ago.
Okay.
And I conferred with Mallory, who confirmed that, uh, that it was happening.
Okay.
Uh, we have received commentary from the butters saying cleanup is happening.
Yeah, it looked better, but it's not, yeah. I'm curious what's still up at the top of the hill.
Yeah, we had a department head meeting on Wednesday last, when I asked, you know, should we be more aggressive in our enforcement and feeling departments? So we have cooperation right now.
Okay.
Let's allow the cooperation to happen.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? Okay, public press question and answer? Have any, no executive session, so, emotions in order for adjournment?
I would, uh, like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.